Good evening. Today is March 3rd, 2020. We're excited for you guys to be here tonight. Our thought for today is common sense is instinct enough is genuine. That's by George Bernard Shaw. I want to go ahead and call this meeting to order tonight. We've got a special guest here tonight with us. Pastor Frank Kelton, he is the pastor of Jesus and Me Ministries. Sir, if you would, please come up tonight. Been knowing this young man for a long time. A great man of God, and sir, we are grateful to have you here tonight and lead us in prayer. If you would, take a few minutes, tell us about yourself and your ministry and pray for our community, please. And also, we did have a homicide today out on in the Elitons. So if you would, I'm not sure they releasing the name yet, but if you would, please keep them in prayer, please.
Amen to the Commissioner, pains to the board here in Newton County. To everyone here, I'm Pastor Frank Kelton, Jesus and Me Ministries. I've been here in Covington since 1999, a retired military. I've been passing Jesus and Me Ministries for 14 years now. So I've been privileged, we do a lot of things within Newton County. We do a food drive, we do clothing giveaway, we do a lot within the community. Last weekend, we had a grief counseling at the church for the community. So we are about doing things in the community to build the community up, amen? I'll go ahead and pray, I'm not going to keep you long, amen? Father, in the name of Jesus, we come out this afternoon giving you all praise and glory. We thank you for the board that's represented here. We thank for everyone that's represented here tonight. Father, we come praying for our community, for you and capture angels about our community right now. Father, the leadership go forth in making decisions for the community. Father, we ask you make, let them make sound decisions. Father, let them come to you first before they make any decision. Father, concern the community. And father, and let the community get behind the leadership. Father, take a leadership, but you got to have a community behind you, Father. So we lifting up the community, capture angels about them, and we put a hedge of protection around their leadership also. Father, in my name of Jesus, we pray, amen?
Amen. Thank you so much, Pastor, for being here tonight. I got, I do have a token of appreciation that I want to give you for all the things that you do in our community and services that you provide for our citizens here. There we go. Thank you so much. We actually, we're going to ask tonight if Commissioner Edwards, if he would lead us in our prayers. Next on the agenda is the agenda adoption. Commissioners, if there's no changes, I seek a motion, please, of approval. It's been motioned by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Schultz. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five to zero, thank you. Our next on the agenda is citizen comments. This is an opportunity we allow citizens to come up and make comments about agenda topics only. You have three minutes to do so. If you would, please state your name, your address for the record, please. Agenda topics only. You may come at this time. Thank you. Our next, the chairman's report, I don't have anything tonight. Mr. Kerr, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A lot of great things are going on in the county and I'll bring your attention to a few of them. But first, I would like to say that to let everybody know that tomorrow night from 5:00 to 7:00, we're having an open house, meet and greet for our new county extension agent, Ashley Best. We put the notice out there on the, on our website and everything. So this is an opportunity for anybody who's interested in any of the things that our extension office has to offer to come by and say hello. And the university in particular is very excited about having Ms. Best here as we are as well. I think she'll, she's got big shoes to fill after Ted's work here with us and so I, but I think she'll do a fine job. Also, on Thursday, I'd like to invite everybody to the second round of our citizen, or excuse me, our Newton County Government 101. And that'll be held at, from 6:30 until, we've got 6:30 to 8:00, 7:30. Oh, thanks. Sorry, too many meetings. 6:00 to 7:30 at Turner Lake tomorrow evening. That's an opportunity for folks to come and to listen and to find out what some of our departments do tomorrow night. Brian, do you have a list of the, of the people who are going to be there tomorrow?
Yes, that's Thursday, the Citizen 101. There are flyers on the table here.
Oh, good, thank you.
If you flip them on the back, it has a list. This Thursday will be Superior Court Judge, where'd you go?
Juvenile Court Judge.
Public defender and district attorney.
So we'll make sure everybody, if you please come out and join us for those, I think it'll be worth your while. Couple of things that are going on also, West Side Precinct now, we, it's been open. Sheriff's Department has been there, but also the tax commissioner's office and the tax assessor's office also have a presence there now. We just completed hooking up all of the computers and getting the furniture and so forth. So this is fully functional over there for all of our, the good folks that live on that side of the county who don't want to come to Covington can go there to get some of their needs taken care of.
We've been getting questions, so, and it is a full operations center, that's correct, right?
Yes, there are reduced number of hours for the assessor's office and for the tax commissioner, but it is open and the hours are posted there, so. This last couple of weeks, we have been conducting hazard mitigation plan update meetings. These are open to all of the public. Our staff is attending those as well. This past week, we did the discussion really centered around not just the coronavirus that has a lot of people concerned, but pandemics and that sort of thing as a whole and the need to use common sense when we're preparing for these and, you know, not to, not to allow emotions to get in the way. But we did have some, some good tips on some things to do to help get us through that particular process. And this will be an ongoing, this is an ongoing plan update that will take, I believe it's another four weeks or another four months that we'll have a meeting. And so just keep an eye out for those days. Also, during this past week, the departments have turned in all of their budget requests. And so the finance department, currently our finance director is reviewing those and then she and I will get together along with the chairman to go through and we'll start reviewing those budgets in depth. Some things in the, this pretty relevant, as it turns out right now, our Development Services Department is working on updating the water resources floodplain and environmental ordinances that we have. We have had some unfortunate events with some serious flooding in the county, in particular at the park that is located along Yellow River. But we are updating those. They have met with EPD to go over the language there to assure that we are keeping our ordinances abreast with the latest state and federal regulations. And we've also met with the DNR to make sure that we have our flood damage standards up, floodplain damage standards up to snuff as well. The folks in the Development Services Department have been meeting with some, they've met with the HOA out at Neely Manor. They've also met with Orchard Park HOA. And they will be meeting this week, I believe it is, with the Georgia Soil and Water Conservation Corps. And there are several new ENS products that are being field tested here in Newton County. And so we are a part of that process and going to be meeting with them to discuss that. And the elections office, of course, as elections are on everyone's mind, we have about 74,971 active voters who are registered in, in the county. We're also, of course, finance is busy on working on budgets, but we are also have, pardon me, been working with the county attorney's office to revise our requirements for vendor certification so that smaller vendors are, have the opportunity to do projects, small projects with us as well. We've selected the design build contractor for Station 8 and we are going to be finalizing the design on that this week. The renovations on Station 2 have started. Station 4, we narrowed the process down. We have a number one site selection now that our attorney's office is working on to contact the owners to see if they're interested in, in selling and we'll be getting the appraisals and so forth on all of that property as well. We did have a dam breach a couple of weeks ago that you may remember was a private dam. And we assisted emergency management with that and with FEMA and GMA when that did happen. Fortunately, we didn't have any downstream damage. And this was a, can act as a reminder to anyone who does have a dam on their property that there is a statewide inspection program that the DNR does conduct and that if they haven't had a dam inspection in a number of years, I would recommend that they do so because they are ultimately responsible for any damage that occurs downstream if there's a breach. So also, we are in the process now of reviewing all of our health insurance and our other benefits needs and we should be receiving bids from the major carriers here. Within a couple of weeks, I've talked with Mr. Massey, our broker, and he's keeping us up to date on the process on that. So, let's see. Oh, Great American Cleanup, another event, Saturday, March 28th. We want to invite everyone to that and you'll hear a little bit more about that as that gets a little closer. On March 21st, the Miracle League Field will have a pavilion grand opening there. There'll be a ribbon cutting ceremony. And then on April the 4th, there is a Easter egg hunt at Wolverine Field. So we'll make sure a lot of kids can get to go to that. Currently, our hang tags for the convenience centers are now, the price on those has just been reduced to, pardon me, down to $75 for the remainder of this fiscal year and those will be good through June 30th. You all have been aware that there was a culvert repair at Gum Creek Road. We had to temporarily close that down, but were able to get it back open within a couple of days' time. We've also, our Chester Clegg, our transportation engineer, has done a preliminary plan review, or field review, rather, for the Brown Bridge Road, Yellow River Bridge crossing that, the new Yellow River Bridge that will be installed on Brown Bridge Road. Senior Services received a $2,000 grant to purchase a projector and this was awarded to them at the Thanks Mom and Dad Award Ceremony in Atlanta. Water Resources has also met with EPD to determine, to help determine the future of the Williams Street facility. And of course, our family fund day, I'll give a plug for that. That will be April the 24th, 5th, sorry. April the 25th and again over at the fairgrounds in the, over by the YMCA and encourage and invite everybody to come. I think we had a lot of fun the last two years and I'm sure it'll be even better this year. And that's all I have, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I hope I'm pronouncing right. COVID virus, you had mentioned it early and when you was giving the county management report. Do we have a plan in place for that or?
Currently, what, excuse me, you think I just got back from China. But based on the information that we have and the information that the health officials are putting out, you know, we're encouraging everybody to wash their hands as often as possible, to use sanitizer and to really go about your business as you would normally. Think of it as a, as you would prepare yourself for a bad flu season. You know, make sure that you have fluids and all of those things that, medicines for analgesics for pain and fever and so forth. If you do feel like you're exhibiting some of those symptoms, then obviously, you know, we'd want to contact, everyone to contact their family physician to help them out with that. But the good thing, if there is a good thing, is that 80-plus percent of the people who contract the disease have only minor type symptoms. And unfortunately, there are those few who have very, have very serious side of, you know, very serious implications and impacts, but. So what we're doing at this point is, is simply reminding everybody to use common sense, but also just as a part of our regular routine, we have incorporated a lot of cross-training in our departments. So if, if there were to be a large number of people to become ill and we would have absences, that we would minimize the impact on the delivery of services because we are training our people to, so that if some, we don't have a situation where we have just one person who knows how to do a particular thing in a department. So maybe a little slower, but we are, you know, we have been doing that and we're continuing to do that and identifying any of those areas where we may need to own up on that a bit.
One last, one last question, if I may ask. Is the Arbor Cousin Project that we had, the board that we had approved to go out and buy, what's the next steps and what stages that we're going to go through? Maybe look at that particular project and see how, I mean, I guess how it will be done?
For, I'm sorry, for which project? For Cousins? Yes, sir. Well, our target to date to close on the Cousins property is March 31st, the end of, the end of March. Currently, we are, Sarah Van Valkenburg is working with the bank to set up everything that's necessary for that. We've ordered a Phase 1 environmental assessment to make sure that there's nothing that may be there that might be hazardous. So we're moving along through the process and we're anticipating we can get it closed by March 31st.
Anyone else? Thank you, guys. Thank you, Mr. Kerr. Our next is item number eight, old business juvenile court records approval. Reallocating, reallocation of existing funds and secure qualified and specialized staff for intake positions. Mr. Kerr?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was tabled from last, from our last meeting. Judge Roberts is here tonight to explain to you what it is that she's requesting and, and the importance and so forth of it. So I'll leave it to Judge Roberts, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kerr. Good evening and I do, I want to apologize first about not being here last time. I incorrectly, just I guess in glancing at the agenda, thought it was on the consent agenda. And so I thought, okay, well, that's it, you know, I've already, you know, so that's my fault. And I do apologize for any waste of your time. That was never any intention of the court. So what we're requesting is, as you all, I think, know and understand, some of the functions in my court are really unique and you don't just go and just find somebody that fills that, that void. And we have a current opening in an intake officer position. We have a current opening in a programming support position for one of our treat, one of our treatment courts. We've reviewed everything and at this time, we believe that we can, that we're fine with making this change. By reallocate, by choosing to create a chief position, the difference is a little over $6,000. Given that I've had some vacancies and I currently have a department head that went from full-time at a very reasonable salary down to, I think she's working 10 hours a week just to help us until we can figure, you know, find somebody that fits that role. And so far, no candidate has presented themselves as of yet. We're still looking. But given those two things, we believe it just gets absorbed in the personnel budget. And I know we've had a historic practice and Mr. Kerr making, just tell us better, but my understanding is anytime those things happen, it generally gets kind of absorbed back into the general fund and used wherever something happens. And, but this time, the court needs it, instead of being absorbed to some, some other department. If that is not an acceptable solution, we do have some funds in our current budget if necessary to move. We can. It will make some things difficult. We're already at 100% expended in our indigent defense fund and as you all know, that's required by law. And so I'm scrambling to figure out how do I pay for indigent defense for the rest of the year? So I've already got one tight spot, but we've been very conservative with our budget as we always are. Some of you that have been on the board for a while know, we stay on budget. The juvenile court, we, we work with whatever the constraints are, we do our best. So this year is no different. But we, when we did the interviews for the open intake officer, we had some very, very amazing applicants and we believe that in that pool, we found these two positions that are critical and would help us. The court at one time did have a chief intake officer and I think four additional intake officers. We've been down to one intake officer with no leadership over that role. So this would be a huge jump for us to get things back on track. Oh, and one other thing, just so you know, while these are critical positions, by law, they are, other than the judges, they are allowed to, excuse me, detain children. And we take that very seriously in our court and we want fairness to all children. So we use a grading, grading instrument consistently that has to be done on every child before they can be detained. And if it's on the fence or if there's something unusual, like the child is 11 years old or things like that, that we don't, we just don't detain them. That's just our court's rule on children under 13. There's got to be a lot of other circumstances going on that would make us change our mind. But, you know, we're, it's, these are very important positions that need a specialized skill set, so.
Thank you. Any questions, commissioners? Anything, Mr. Kerr, we'll move ahead.
No, sir, I don't have anything.
And we have worked with HR to figure out the funding and things like that and they also feel confident that we've got that wiggle room to make this happen. So we'll continue to work with them and finance to make sure we're on track.
Thank you so much. Our commissioners, I seek a motion, please. Our Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion for the approval of reallocation of existing funds to secure qualified and specialized staff for intake positions in the juvenile court.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any more discussion? All in favor? It passes five to zero. Thank you so much, thank you for being here today. Thank you. Our next is item number nine, the consent agenda. Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Could we pull out the minutes from the recreation? And the reason why I'm asking that before is to give my good friend Ronnie an opportunity since he was, I was not at the meeting, maybe to, to give his point of view because it's, and as I said at the meeting, it's two in-town commissioners. It's myself and Commissioner Cowan. And I think that when you're kind of making decision in town, you should at least hear from your commissioners.
Thank you, sir. I mean, Commissioner Cowan, he can, that is actually not on the consent agenda, but I can tell you, if he want to make a comment tonight, he can make it in commission comments. Oh, it's already been passed, sir. If you want to make a comment, you can in commissioners' comments tonight.
Okay.
All right, thank you. I seek a motion, if there are no changes from the consent agenda, that we approve the consent agenda. It's been motioned by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Schultz. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five to zero, thank you. Next is item number 10. Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, item number 10, solid waste resolution R030320. Authorization, authorization to execute agreement governing the expenditures for the state and local government costs. Mr. Kerr?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. These agreements, there's two, two of these agreements and they are for essentially the same thing. The amounts are different. These are requests for reimbursement from the hazardous site trust fund. And the first one is for $165,782.39. And the second one, pardon me, I just got to get this out, is for $336,066.52. And this, these are funds that we are, that the solid waste authority has requested from the state to reimburse us for certain expenditures that we had in getting the landfill into compliance after the spill a few years ago. The reason that this board is considering it is because the county is the signatory on the original agreement. And so being brought before you all for that purpose.
Thank you, sir. We're going to ask, since Mr. Kerr explained both of them together, we're going to ask approval for both of them. That is R030320 and R0303208. I seek a motion, please. Miss Commissioner Schultz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move for approval of Resolution R030320 and Resolution R0303208.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Schultz and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for our information purposes, if we receive a fund, does those funds come back and go into the general fund or does it go into, I guess, I want to say the enterprise fund?
They would actually go into the solid waste fund because the money was spent out of the solid waste fund and so it would be reimbursed as solid waste.
Okay. One last question. So the solid waste is totally, I guess, supporting itself or? So the solid waste is totally, I guess, supporting itself or generating the funds to, to run solid waste? Or is the general fund funding it?
The general fund still supports the solid waste authority. Primarily, the, well, the, the support is, I believe it's a little over $600,000. That is the interest payment on the bond that was issued to purchase the land from East Georgia.
Absolutely. I, I just, you know, I just don't see we taking the taxpayers, they're paying for it and then we receive money back and it doesn't go back to taxpayers. We still funding. So I just, thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'm sorry. Commissioner Schultz.
I believe that $600,000 is in the form of an appropriation. Is that correct?
No, actually, I think it is a transfer, simply a transfer.
Anyone else? All in favor? All opposed? You wanna give a reason why?
Well, you know, it's, it's, it's just like we double dipping, you know? The taxpayer, we get, we're paying bills and paying bills and we never get anything back. And yet at the end of the year, either taxes goes up or, or do a rollback, which it goes up and it's, well, it's not a tax increase, but it is. And I, I just, just don't get no good feeling. I wouldn't spend my money that way. And I'm definitely not gonna vote to spend the citizen's money that way.
Thank you, sir. It passes 4, 4-1, with one, one that is staying. Uh, next on the agenda is item number 12, Public Works, request approval to proceed with the Kirkland Road and Jack Neely Road intersection improvement. Mr. Kerr.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Chester Clegg, our transportation engineer, engineer is here tonight. And I'm gonna ask Mr. Clegg if he'll come and address and talk a little bit about this project.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, the intersection at, at Jack Neely and Kirkland Road has been kind of a bottleneck for many years. And we've looked at doing different things and it's finally time to, to do something. We've got a 225 lot condo unit development that's just about to get permitted right at the intersection. And the, the engineer did a traffic study and that intersection is currently a four-way stop. And it rated out at a level of service of a, at D currently. And in two years after additional population growth and then the, the new development in, at the intersection, it's gonna, they are, estimate that it will be a level F. So the, it would be backing up during school in the morning and then when school lets out in the evening. And so we really need to do something about it. So I'm requesting that the board approve, moving forward with the project. We estimate that it'll be about 2.5 million. That's a preliminary estimate. And what, what I, what I will end up doing is bringing, of course, once I get the proposals this week, recommend an engineer to get started on the design. And of course, a right-of-way acquisition and construction would all come to the board for approval at a later date.
So it's gonna be a, a traffic light?
Well, that is to be determined. Now, I would love to have a roundabout, but it is on a pretty good slope and it has some sight distance issues. So I anticipate a traffic signal. If we can work out a roundabout, I, I would prefer that. But we'll just have to see, we'll see what the engineer does once they do their study and determine which will be better. And we are, I'm currently, we're currently discussing with the developer about, you know, giving up some right-of-way for the project. So that's a, a good thing. And they, they seem very positive toward that, so.
Yeah. I'll tell you what, this is a, that's a bad intersection. Two schools over there and then, and adult daycare over there. It's just a lot of traffic. And I'm telling you, I'm, I'm about a mile away from that intersection. And when I come out in the morning, it depends on what time I come out. If I come out after 7:30, you can forget it 'cause traffic gets backed up almost a no path a mile. And it is, it's just a bad, a bad intersection. But thank you. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Schultz.
Chester, you indicated that you have designs that are going to be submitted this week. Is that correct?
I have a proposal that will be submitted for engineering on the project. And I'd like to bring it to the board in, in a couple of weeks to, for review and approval.
And the, and the funding source?
Oh, it's Splo, 2017 Sploes.
Okay. So I have to reiterate exactly what Chairman Bane said, that this is in my district and it has been problematic for many years. The adult daycare across the street has, they, Ms. Fay has been very vocal about having something done with this intersection. And it actually was promised in a previous commission that something would be done with this intersection. So I'm glad that we finally have the funds to be able to do it right because it is, there've been multiple accidents there. And you've got children, you've got elderly. So it is something that is very necessary. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. I seek a motion, please. Commissioner Schultz.
Mr. Chair, since this is in District 3, I move for approval to proceed with the Kirkland Road at Jack Neely Road intersection improvement project to be paid with 2,017 Sploes funds.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Schultz and second by Commissioner Cowan. Any more discussion? All in favor? Thank you. It passes 5 to 0. Thank you, Lord. Uh, next is Public Works. Chester, you wanna go?
Thank you, Chairman. As you know, Georgia Department of Transportation has agreed to replace the bridge at, at West Bear Creek and, and County Road 213. And so they've just about finished their engineering, the preliminary engineering phase of the project. And they're moving into the right-of-way acquisition. And turns out that the county not only owns the right-of-way in the bridge that they're replacing, also we own properties on each side of the bridge. And so GDOT has requested that the county donate some temporary construction easements. There are three different parcels. And I have included the, the map there that the county owns where they need the easements. And of course, once the construction is complete, those easements will go away. And so I have, you know, we have the closing documents. That's the formal closing. And there were some questions about the, the wording and, and I have to get that worked out with Megan's office. But requesting that the county approve, you know, donating those easements to GDOT so they can replace the county bridge for us. And of course, they're replacing it at no cost to, to the county. So that's a good thing.
And just for everybody to know that the property will revert back to the county. Is that correct?
It will. I mean, it, it's, it's a simply a, an easement, a construction easement. And it'll disappear once the construction is complete.
Thanks, sir. Any questions, guys? I seek a motion, please. Hey, can you, can you speak into the mic and cut the mic on, please? Thank you.
Okay. Let me do it again.
Yeah, please.
Okay. All right. I make a motion to approve the donation of three temporary construction easements to GDOT for construction of the bridge at 213 and West Bear Creek.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Cowan and second by Commissioner Edwards. Yeah, he beat you. Yeah. Any more discussion? Uh, Commissioner Edwards.
Chairman, I can tell you, this bridge, which is barely in District 5, but it is in District 5, is, I tr, I travel it most days of the week. And it's a, it, it's scary. It's kind of narrow. And it's, it's semi-scary to go across with the, with oncoming, facing oncoming traffic. So I think, I think this will be, and I, I think it's important that everyone knows this is a county-owned bridge being replaced for, free of charge for the, by the Georgia Department of Transportation. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? I seek a mo, uh, all in favor? It passes 5 to 0. Thank you. Next is item number 14. Resolution R 030320, a resolution opposing a House bill 302. Mr. Kerr.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. As you'll recall, last year, the Georgia General Assembly was considering a bill that would essentially remove some of the home rule authority that each of the local jurisdictions in the state have. And, and what they were seeking to do with the bill at the time was to remove any of the architectural design guidelines or rather preempt any of those from any local ordinances or zoning ordinances. And so that the only requirement would be essentially that a building would meet the minimum requirements of the building codes, the ICC building code. That bill did not pass, however, it did resurface again this year and actually has been changed and modified to bill, the House bill now is 937 and the Senate bill here is 172. There are additional restrictions in all in this new, new bill. But it does still, that are even more restrictive of the local government. You would not only exempt or rather, those requirements would not only be in, in general areas, but also in any area that you had an overlay, any stipulations that have been placed in the overlays like ours, which include things like porches, construction materials and so forth. All of those would be, would be lifted from the requirements. And again, usurping the home rule authority that's been established, you know, by our, the state constitution. So this resolution is to, is being considered as a, to let the, our local delegation know and the legislature as a whole, that you all are not in support of this bill and would like to see it not pass. I know Commissioner Schultz has, has worked with the ACCG folks on it and knows this bill pretty well. So. But, and I would encourage you as well to, to, to pass this resolution.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Schultz, you have anything that you wanna add?
This bill came out of committee. It was in the House Agricultural Committee last week. It came out of committee. It is now in House rules. So it has some legs. It is important that we send the message to our delegation. They, when they came to hear us back in January, they, they all said that they were opposed to House Bill 302 and Senate Bill 172. Now that it's morphed, we just need to give them additional credence to the fact that we want them to make sure that they are not in, they oppose this bill. As you indicated, it would not allow for any overlays. It does still allow for historic districts, but you have to go to DCA and get the approval through DCA. Now, if any of you've ever had to go through DCA, they're not staffed to be able to handle this. So it's something that it usurps local control. We are all about having our own citizens in our community make the decisions that are best for themselves. And with all of our overlays that we approved, there were multiple meetings where the citizens made the decisions. The Board of Commissioners just acted upon the decisions that, that the citizens made. This would preempt that process and put it in the hands of the state and a, and DCA, which really takes it out of our local jurisdiction. So I would encourage you to, I, I know that I'm, I very strongly oppose this. And I know that our delegation has opposed the other two bills. So we just need to send a strong message with this.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. I seek a motion, please. Uh, Commissioner Schultz.
Mr. Chair, so since we've already approved R 030320, I'm gonna ask that we make this one R 030320C. So I move for approval of this resolution opposing House Bill 302, House Bill 937 and Senate Bill 172, preemption of local building design standards.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Schultz and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any more discussion? Commissioner, I mean, Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I have, I know we had, the, the entire legislative delegation is well aware of our wishes. I've spoken with Brian Strickland and Dave Belton again. And, and I can, and I think it's important for everyone to know exactly what happens here is if, if this bill, House bill were to pass, then the, the, the development standards put in place or put in there by someone you did not elect on, on a local level. I can only see this benefiting builders and developers and I, I can't see it benefiting anyone else. So I can't find anything that would, any aspect of that bill that would, would benefit anyone but, anyone but the people that stand to profit from it. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to add to the conversation as well and reiterate that, of course, Newton County isn't the only county that is currently opposing these particular standards. There's a 101 other counties currently, out of the 159 counties, that basically is opposing turning this over or taking it away from local control. So I just wanted to put that on the record as well, that it's not just Newton County, but there's 101 other counties that have already submitted opposition in regards to turning this over out of the 159 counties in Georgia.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All in favor? It passes 5 to 0. Thank you. Next is alcohol license renewal. Alana, Alana, that's what it is? Express LLC 1756 Highway 11, Covington, Georgia. Bet he got some, some serious names. You got that one?
I think I got this one. I've received an email on it. It is Saleen Shakan.
Saleen Shakan, District 1. That's a renewal. Do we need a motion for that? Yeah, I thought so. Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. First, any known violations? So move for approval of the renewal of Alena Express LLC 1756 Highway 11, Covington, Georgia. Saleen Shagan, District 1.
Can I get a second, please? Thank you. It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Schultz. Any, any discussion? All in favor? It passes 5 to 0. The final reading, Quick Spot Marathon 10260 Highway 36, Covington, Georgia 30013. Jay Sabree, V Patel, District 5.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I approve, I make a motion to approve the final reading of Quick Spot Marathon 10260 Highway 36, Covington, Georgia 30013. Jay Sharindji, V Patel.
Thank you, ma'am. It's been motioned by Commissioner Cowan and second by Commissioner Schultz. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes 5 to 0. Final reading, Salem Food Mart 3538 Salem Road, Covington, Georgia 30016. Rosani Corani, District 3.
Mr. Chair, I move for approval of the final reading of Salem Food Mart 3538 Salem Road, Covington, Georgia 30016, Rosina Corani.
Can I get a second, please? It's been motioned by Commissioner Schultz and second by Commissioner Mason. It's been motioned by Commissioner Schultz and seconded by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five to zero. Next is item number eighteen. This is an opportunity that will allow citizens to come up and make comments. Uh, you may come up at this time. You got three minutes. You may come up at this time. You have three minutes to do so. Please state your name, your address for the record, please. You have three minutes to do so, sir.
My name's Steve Cross. I live at seven forty We Hunt Road. The next county can hear that. Um, I've been a businessman here for twenty-five years. And I don't think any of y'all know me, do you? Never met me? There's a reason for that. I behave myself. I do my job. I go home. I raise my children here. They all ra- they're, uh, doing well on their own, taking care of themselves. But I have never, in my life, been treated so badly as I have by the Sheriff Department in this county. My girlfriend went missing a year and a half ago. They had three opportunities to pick her up and they did not do it. They let her get go, let her get gone. And now they, they're, they are constantly harassing me. I've been arrested three times this year. Last Saturday, without a warrant, kept all day long while they destroyed my property, tore up my equipment, tore a wall out of my house. I am not a happy man. And I don't know if y'all can help me do anything about this, but I had to have my say here this day. In half of the amount of time that I let you allot of me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Please state your name, your address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
My name is Donna Lindsay and I live at one forty Glen Isle Drive, Covington, Georgia. And I have a complaint against Ray Spencer, who is the Environmental Compliance Officer over Newton County. I have a stormwater drainage problem that not only affects my property, but it goes downstream. It's flowing into Snapping Shoals Creek and goes into the South River. I have reported this issue a total of eight times and there has been nothing done. I have pictures. I only thought there were seven of y'all, so this is just one occurrence. May I approach and hand you that?
Sure can.
This is just all day where it's been. This is due to refer on the breach going from the neighbor's property onto the tar, three quarters of acre time. And, um, and we have approached Ray Spencer multiple times. And I've been told by Ray that he cannot enforce the fact that the silt is leaving a neighbor's property coming onto our property. But yet I'm an interior designer in this county and I work for multiple builders. And those builders tell me that when they get their silt onto the road, they receive written citations from Ray Spencer and are required to shovel it up and get it back onto their property. So I'm trying to figure out why there are rules that apply to some people, but not to others as to the cleanup of a property that not only affects my personal property, but is, I heard something mentioned earlier about EPD and soil. This is affecting fish. The fish are dying because of this silt. Eight occurrences going into this pond. Um, I've done two turbidity tests. The turbidity test is a hundred and fifty-six. And, um, what's leaving that one fifty-six is going into Snapping Shoals Creek and into South River. And I can't seem to get any help to get this problem solved. So because Newton County is, um, he is on his own, I've went, reached out to EPD and they tell me that because Newton County is certified to manage this on their own, that Ray Spencer is the sole source of contact for this problem. Is there anything I can do about that? And at what point does the county become liable for not enforcing this policy?
Uh, and Commissioner Cummings, you can.
Pardon me?
Commissioner Edwards is gonna respond.
Okay.
You got twenty-five seconds?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Four zero, Glenn is our taking, looking out my back. Thank you.
Anyone else? Sir, you only, sir? Yes.
Hi, Lena. I live at Forsen. I am pond that is full of silt. Um, this is reached out to the part I'm happening to to me in almost a month. Um, and it even happened this morning in the pond. No pictures, if you would like additional pictures, several. And every time I washed, every single, I need to know what I can, the silt coming onto, coming down into my creek, which is a lot of storm water pond for, that used to be four to six feet deep. I can do about this. If he has any response.
Um, the way response, um, now Commissioner Cummings, if you can hang.
To do areas I can go to.
First is that the Commissioners' comments, which would be net round.
Okay, additional pictures?
Thank you, ma'am. Move to the mic. Please state your name, your.
My name is Steven. I live at seven forty We Hunt Road. We have called, come out here and fix it on his property. We're running, rode, going into this stuff and running into, have yet to see him yet. And he really needs something done, whatever's going on. Uh, they come out one time and arrest him, if, if anything, nobody knows where the girl, needs something done there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is at seven forty We Hunt Road. Um, I just want to say, I was one of the ones they, uh, they had any other talk to them, but to a red, kept me for six hours, said that I was under arrest, decided to let me go because they've done as far as very little to find her, to know where she is. Nobody deserves to be just there focusing on, and me. They have torn up the property, scattered some, um, and now it's running into, and it's freezer that thing rotted in it, so it up, now it's all running into, and stuff running into the creek. This guy won't do anything. We are this evening be arrested. And tomorrow or the next, and arrest because they want to, don't want to talk to them, make up things, they lie. And I have liked, stood this way by any citizen. I drive a bus for Calweda County, Dale County, uh, Hughes. I don't, I've not been in trouble. People have harassed us, do about this because everybody at the Sheriff's Department, anything they want to, because anybody know who they ain't. Something needs to be done, people. A E L I A D H A.
Thank you so much.
Johnson, ten thirty-six. You know, we've been, they, uh, were, had planned on a couple of other cemeteries. Right had a chance to do anything. It's carrot, the tools, but if we get another some more. That you, you, you got our park out there and I hadn't heard anything. Let's just, let's just keep it at least. Down on, uh, Lower River, off the, uh, they're having a lot of trouble washing down the heat ditch. Uh, running to that property, if, if in a way possible, a pool, uh, be done about it. Not forget about the, uh, hill area.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Hey, everybody. Uh, I'm the owner of, owner of Jack Newian. And something will be done. It's really bad now. Schools were, uh, thought traffic that would be there. Because we do have, and we've, and this, and this, that there would be, um, nothing. Hoping to do something in Cochrane Road, really bad. Um, the, the last accident I had to go out in, was in the back of a car. Self-informed approval and get done. I did reach out, also in helping me hopefully later. I hope you, the rest of the Commissioners.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Teresa Roberts, Avenue in the Livingston Community. Wrote each of you this morning. A proposed storage for eighty-one south as you approach. My neighbors and I proposal and we are, I drive to Atlanta sixty miles a day and a half for the last thirty years here. I settled that I could raise my children, affordable housing. Night, there's a quiet wildlife at night, idyllic for, for Ray. We, construction on the west side of the, with no to speak of. It's backed up to the interstate. The one is backed up. We better, but we've been backed up. We have a dollar gem, two feet middle of that, so within a five mile radius and more. We do not want the highway through there. It's with tractor trailers. A car accident a couple of weeks outside of our subdivision. Storage facilities are not gonna, there are ten stores within a ten mile radius. Six of those are within, how many storage units? And do we need them? Need them where we do not have ration lanes. We shouldn't, we do not want the light, but we have lost so much Walmart in that area that, and enjoy that, the Walmart community and all we, we don't want that body of life. And it's been this, this particular piece of private R-three zoning. Nobody wants to get up in the metal buildings in their front, wants to pass that every day. Wants to deal with the abandoned vehicles that are in the backside of the property. You can drive this county and see that that, we just ask that you own us and to thought, process the county. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Commissioner Henderson, comments?
Ms. Chairman, I have none.
Two young lady, these photos, a- after we adjourn, after we adjourn.
Thank you, Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll address Ms. Roberts. Um, I am in District Two afterwards so that we can, uh, in regards to that area, sure that I get as much feelable. So the move, uh, in a progress to that, just from an emotional perspect- perspective as well, we want to make it a fair and right, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stormwater runoff issue right now, I'm just, Megan, in there a private cause of that?
Yes, sir. It'd be trespass.
Trespass action is, which would be out of the county. You're not saw stormwater and damage other people's. I would suggest you talk to that. Uh, Spring Hill Park, Mr. J- it's just been raining some. We still got a piece of property out, the property we looked at before, topography out there was, we're hoping to, still trying to, the property, of course, any input that's out there would be greatly.
Commissioner Schultz.
Well, um, Ms. Fay, the resolution, the project, for end of your few transportation director, uh, Mr. Clay. Like to work to get property to make sure that seating with the, for that area. So me afterwards and I'll, um, know that we've got, you were promised this and didn't have the funds to complete, to stay on it together, work together to make sure this happens. I just want to announce, um, on March the twelfth AM with GPTC bringing a, um, development to the West Side precinct. We will also be burnt on March the twelfth AM. GPTC is now, be actually conducting about advanced management and their certification. Have individual feel like would be encourage you to, to attend. I've also managers to be there. We're very excited to get some who are working outside of certification so that they can.
Ms. Kerr, you got a, you got a need for it? Thank you. Well, I seek a motion. It's been motioned, Commissioner Henderson, and seconded by, all in favor. Adjourn. Thank you. So who are?